So the in First Samuel, we're told honor the Lord.
Hey, very good. So at this time, we'll go to item two, which is Human Services Agency. Wendy, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's okay. Good morning. I'm well, thank you. A good morning Chairman and members of the Board Monica Connor Assistant Director for the Human Services Agency. At this time, I'd like to introduce Program Manager Jacinta Vargas, who will lead us in recognizing several outstanding foster parents and speak to the importance of National Foster Care Month.
Good morning Chairman and members of the Board. May is nationally recognized as Foster Care Month, a time to honor and uplift foster parents who open their hearts and homes to children in need. These individuals provide safe, stable, and nurturing environments for children as they await reunification with their families, which remains the ultimate goal of foster care. Foster parents play a vital role in a child's journey. Their selflessness, kindness, and dedication make an incredible difference in the lives of children. Foster parents not only provide care, but they support the transition back to a child's biological family by encouraging connection, communication, and continuity. As of February two thousand twenty-five, approximately two hundred and thirty-three children in Kings County were placed in out-of-home care. Our resource families step in during difficult times and provide love, structure, and support to children when they need it most. Today, we are proud to recognize several of our exceptional foster parents who are with us. Before requesting the Board to adopt a resolution proclaiming May two thousand twenty-five as Foster Care Month in Kings County, we would like to take a moment to honor their service. We began by recognizing Nilda Rivera, who has served as a relative resource parent for six years. She finds the greatest joy in providing a safe, loving environment for her grandchildren and cherishes the opportunity to watch them grow and thrive. Next, we recognize Nina and Robert Davila, Foster Family Agency Resource Parents with North Star Family Center, who have cared for children for thirteen years. Nina enjoys helping children, supporting reunification, and staying involved in their lives. Robert finds fulfillment in helping children with homework, building meaningful connections, and ensuring the children feel safe and supported. Their longstanding commitment is deeply appreciated. Next, we recognize Bobby Williams, who has been a dedicated resource parent for twenty-six years. She became a foster mom out of deep care for children and a desire to show them that there is hope for their future. Her commitment has lifted and inspired countless young lives over the years. Next, we recognize Elizabeth and Epifano Cuero, a tribally-approved resource family. As the eldest in their families, they've long taken on caregiving roles, supporting siblings, cousins, and friends. When circumstances shifted for their own family, they embrace fostering as a way to continue supporting children in need. Since then, they've provided a nurturing supportive home for children. They consider fostering a true blessing and an honor to be part of each child's journey. We also recognize Yolanda Ariano Perez and Julio Caesar Sandoval, resource parents since two thousand nineteen. They are motivated to support children through difficult times and are committed to provide a safe and loving home. They were blessed to adopt a child placed with them as a newborn and look forward to continuing their journey of helping many more children in need. Next, we recognize Luis Flores, a resource parent since two thousand eighteen. He began his journey by opening his home to a relative in need, but quickly saw the opportunity to help more children. Since then, he has fostered nine minors, adopted two. Mr. Flores creates a supportive space where children can simply be kids, encouraging them to dream, beg, heal, and build a strong foundation for their future. To all our foster parents, thank you for being a light in the lives of those that need it the most. Your compassion, resilience, and generosity are the foundation of a better future for the children of Kings County. At this time, we respectfully ask the Board to adopt a resolution proclaiming May two thousand twenty-five as Foster Care Month in Kings County. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Rusty Robinson?
Yes, can we have our staff also join the picture?
Okay, very good. Do we have any questions from the audience? I know we voted on that without the proper proceedings, but did anybody in the audience have to say anything at this time? Is anybody online that has a question? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is Administration. Gary Martinez.
Veronica? Veronica?
We'll give it a few minutes here.
We're getting word that the they can't hear online.
Does Kathy Baker seem to hear just fine? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on to item number two. I'm gonna say B, Administration, just to A, but we definitely have Veronica Mello.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I'm Veronica Mello, Administrative Analyst at the County Administrative Office. Today, I have the pleasure of introducing our next speaker, Lieutenant Matt Drury of the California Highway Patrol, who will present the item Recognizing Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Morning.
Good morning. Yes, as Veronica said, my name is Lieutenant Matt Drury. I'm the commander of, as you know, of your local Highway Patrol Office here. This year, we're hosting the Peace Officer Memorial, and we're asking the Board to consider an adoption, adopting a resolution proclaiming May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May fifteenth through May twenty-first as Police Week in Kings County. As you may know, Peace Officer Memorial Day and Police Week is an observance in the United States paying tribute to local, state, and federal peace officers who have died in the line of duty. Since nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy established the first year of the memorial, and since then, every sitting President of the United States has proclaimed May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May fifteenth as Police Week. In recognition of this observance and a memorial ceremony is being held at the Kings County Government Center Courtyard right outside your office here tomorrow, May fourteenth at ten AM. And fortunately, no local names will be added, but unfortunately, we did have four officers and the State of California will be memorializing that died during two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from questions from the audience? Any questions online? I think with the board. Goodbye Supervisor Nevs. Thank you, Supervisor Robinson.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
We have a proclamation here we'll present to you for a photo op, and so.
Make him sign something. It makes him feel better when he mixed up with the CHP.
Yeah, don't run radio nowadays, so. We'll move on. Thank you very much. We'll be here tomorrow about ten o'clock for the memorial out front, so I'll look forward to everybody being here. It's a good event to go to, or that's a reminder that we always have a good people out there looking up our best interest, and sometimes they have a bad day and maybe need to be remembered. Thank you. At this time, we'll go to unscheduled appearances, because we have an opportunity for a member of the public to ask the Board on any items of interest within the Board jurisdiction and which are already on the agenda. Not all even agenda. The Board will not answer any questions impromptu, and concerns or complaints will be referred to appropriate staff for items which are on the agenda. Members of the public who do provide it and not going to address the Board, as each item is brought up for discussion. Speakers are limited to two minutes, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say, so we have.
First thing is, the Board did receive correspondence from Shonda Jackson, and you did receive a copy electronically and a copy, and it will become part of the record. Our first speaker is Shonda Jackson.
Good morning. How are you today? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. I am Shonda Jackson, resident of Kings County. I became a former employee as of last Friday, May ninth. I worked for the County of Kings just shy of eight years. For some, that seems not enough, not long enough, but for some, that is quite sufficient. I was blessed to be able to resign on great terms, so for me, I consider it a part of God's divine design. I am here today to implore each member of the Board, the CAO, and every department head to consider the word "community." One definition says community is a group of people living in the same place or having a particular characteristic in common, like employees. While another definition says it is a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. Most of us and some of you see your community as only the people in your department, just as your neighbors are only the people right next door. But I challenge you to remember, your community should also be the second definition. Each department is part of the same functioning government body, connected, and should definitely be in fellowship, not silos. You should all share positive attitudes towards county employees as a whole, be mindful of the best interests of Kings County, and share the goals that best benefit the stability and betterment of our community. While maintaining the idea of community, I encourage each of you not to forget there's a difference between obligation and dedication. Don't abuse someone's obligation to provide a living for themselves and their family. But also, don't neglect dedication. There are people with longevity, seniority, wisdom, and a desire to contribute to Kings County and provide a service to its residents. Don't neglect that. Don't let your employee list be a revolving door. Encourage and provide opportunities for succession. Lastly, don't let the politics of government overshadow the fact that regardless of who's in the seat, in the House, in the Cabinet, or et cetera, we will still live, we still live technically in a democracy. Government, especially local government, should be for the people because it can't function without the people. Thank you for your time, and I want to leave you with this. Romans twelve and sixteen, be of the same mind toward one another. Do not set your mind on high things, but associate with the humble. Do not be wise in your own opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Shonda, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And appreciate your service to the county for the last eight years.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Gazaric.
Morning, Elizabeth. State your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Elizabeth Gazaric, eight-eight-two-zero, Carolyn Avenue, Hanford, California. As of today, we're still in the county, although not for much longer. I come to you as a member of the community, as the last speaker spoke of, of the El Rancho neighborhood. I sent each of you an email last night. It's the second one I've had to send in the last six months. We have a neighbor whose dogs are terrorizing our neighborhood. Today, that I know of, for sure, they have killed four of our cats. They are going after our elderly walking in our neighborhoods. They're going after people walking their own dogs. The morning my cats were killed in December, the two mornings, my children were standing at a bus stop. We had fifty-five kids between the ages of four and fourteen, standing at bus stops, or we had two pit bulls running around. Animal control did finally come. They made sure the dogs were secured in the owner's yard. The same thing last night when they killed two more cats. The Sheriff's Department came and made sure they were secured in the yard. Just in case you're not exactly familiar where I'm talking about, it's five houses down from where you all just did a ribbon cutting on the Sunrise Apartments. You're getting ready to place people in those apartments down the street from some dogs that are terrorizing. I understand they're also terrorizing the Hamblin neighborhood. I'm coming to ask you, I understand we have protocols. I don't know how many cats or too many, but I know when my kid gets hurt, I'm gonna be really upset. I spoke with my superintendent and my resource officer this morning. My kids will no longer be riding the bus to school. I can't do it. I'm afraid to walk out of my house in the morning. Probably about a month ago is the first time I walked outside my door in a house that I've lived in for twenty years and a neighborhood I've lived in for forty-six years. I'm afraid to walk out my door because I don't know if I'm gonna be attacked. So I'm asking that you all please speak with our with our departments, look at our protocols. And please save our children.
Thank you very much.
Speaker in.
Thanks, Joe.
Next speaker is Joe Thompson.
Good Joe, please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning Supervisor. My name is Joe Thompson. I'm proud to be here on behalf of you, you, um, sorry, not used to doing public comment. I'm proud to be here on behalf of service employees in the National Union UHW, representing the thousands of healthcare workers in this county. I currently work as the new political organizer for this county, so I'm gonna be happy to get to know each and every one of you as we continue to progress in this role. But I come before you today as a concerned constituent because of the recent cuts to Medicaid. So I am here to ask you to please pass a resolution condemning any cuts to Medicaid or Medicare programs. You know, it's really important for this county to take a stand against massive cuts to these essential programs by making it clear to Congress members, including Congressman David Valadeo, who represents constituents of this county, that these cuts would have a devastating impact on the constituents. The four federally qualified healthcare centers, clinics in this county depend on Medi-Cal revenue, and the proposed federal cuts will impact their ability to serve low-income constituents, and it will impact their ability to serve them even further. This reduction in funding could lead to hospital and clinic closures, additionally impacting lower-income constituents, longer wait times, and decreased access to primary care services. Medi-Cal also funds in-home support services that keeps elderly and disabled people in their homes instead of in costly care facilities. Medi-Cal funds support regionally centers and individual education plans for children with physical and learning disabilities so they can succeed in school and far beyond. Kings County has an interest in ensuring the health and safety of all county residents. I strongly urge this Board to pass a resolution condemning these cuts. And lastly, I'll just say, you know, I'm twenty-two years old. I'm very young. But for me, this is very important because when I was sixteen years old, I was given a twenty thousand dollar out-of-pocket dental bill costs. So for me, this is just an amazing issue. I really hope you guys can stand with your constituents and myself who are on Medicaid and Medi-Cal and fight with us. So thank you all for the opportunity to speak. Look forward to talking to you soon.
Next speaker is Justin Stubbert.
Good, Justin.
Good morning Supervisors. My name is Justin Stubbert. I'm a proud Union Member of SEIU UHW and currently work as an Ophthalmic Assistant at Kaiser Permanente Fresno. I come before you today as a concerned healthcare worker and community constituent to ask this Board to pass a resolution condemning any cuts to Medicaid or Medicare programs. It is important that Kings County takes a stand against massive cuts to these essential programs by making it clear to Congress members, including Congressman David Valadeo, who represents constituents of this county, that cuts would have a devastating impact. Medi-Cal is a critical source of healthcare coverage for low-income persons, children, disabled persons, and the elderly. Kings County has sixty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-four Medi-Cal enrollees totaling forty-five percent of the county's population, all of whom deserve access to high-quality healthcare. Medi-Cal spending brings seven hundred and sixty million dollars into Kings County each year. These funds are at risk of significant cuts in the proposed federal budget. Kings County hospitals heavily depend on Medi-Cal reimbursement, and the proposed federal Medicaid cuts would affect their ability to continue to provide high-quality care to all county residents. I know that personally, in I'm thirty-four, I've worked in a number of hospitals and healthcare settings, and even a lot of our staff require aid from Medi-Cal programs as well as our patients. I mean, I've seen people's vision saved. And it's just, it's great for our community, and we have to, you know, protect those that are more, most at risk. That is why I urge this Board to send a strong statement to Congress, sorry, to congressional representatives of this county, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
All the speaker cards that I have.
Anybody online?
I don't see anyone raised online.
Any in the audience? Henderson, good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I just wanted to, Jim Henderson, Public Works Director, just want to take this opportunity to introduce Jamie Solis. He is the new Building Maintenance Superintendent. He's been with Kings County for the past fifteen years. Started as a senior building maintenance worker. Recently, he has been our facilities manager for the past seven years. And so, he's the guy.
You got a comment, Jamie? You got the?
I'll give you, I'll give you a couple minutes.
Uh, just happy to. Very grateful for the opportunity, and I'll do my best, and like Jim said, I've been here fifteen years. I've dedicated my life to construction and maintenance and hopefully I can do well. He did great. Thank you.
Very good. Congratulations. Anybody else in the audience have anything they'd like to say? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, which is Approval of Minutes. Item A, Report Out of Close Session, the regular meeting, April twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In close session on April twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, there was a motion by Supervisor Verboen with the second from Supervisor Nevs to file a claim against the City of Hanford and subsequent lawsuit upon claim denial related to fuel contamination at the Hanford Municipal Airport. Each member present voted in favor with Supervisor Valley absent.
Thank you very much. Item B, Report Out of Close Session from Special Meeting, May eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
There's nothing to report from the special meeting for May eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Approval of Minutes from Regular Meeting, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Goodbye Supervisor Robinson. Thank you, Supervisor Nevs. Now, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboen? Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
And if I can have all the board members please speak into your microphones. We have quite a few people saying they cannot hear.
So I got a question. So do I go to public comments on these items here?
The public has the ability to comment on everything on the agenda, yes, sir.
Would the public have a comment on the last item we just voted on, the last three? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number D.
Mr. Chairman, just so you don't have to do that again, maybe it's possible that we put that the right word is disclaimer on the agenda that the public has right to comment on each agenda item, then you'll have to.
Yeah, we say it at the beginning.
Yeah, then you'll have to take it up every item. If it's, if it's on there, at least notice then.
We can look. Typically, it is opening it up to each member of the public for each item, but we, I'll look at that further.
We got new counsel, and I got my notes later. I just don't always look at them. Okay, we'll move on now to item D, Approval of Minutes from Special Meeting, May eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Do we have any comments from the public? Any comments from the Board?
The movement chair.
Move by Supervisor Nevs. Thank you, Supervisor Robinson. Man of the Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, four in favor, one absent. Move on now to the Consent Calendar. All items listed on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. If a Board Member has a question, request additional information, or wishes to comment on an item, the vote should be taken, not taken until not until after questions have been addressed and comments made. And the public has an opportunity to comment on the consent counter and the consent items. Do we have any directions from the Board?
Can you read it again?
No. Move as presented. Goodbye Supervisor Nevs. Thank you, Supervisor Robinson. Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll go on to roll call.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
In favor, it passes without comment. And we'll move on now to regular calendar, and we have item A, Fire Department. Lewis, oh.
Blake.
Blake, how we doing? Blake, how we doing?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh Blake Adney, Fire Marshal with the Kings County Fire Department. So today, the Fire Department is requesting the adoption of the proposed changes to the county ordinances, um ensuring that they accurately represent the safety of the citizens, community members, and any person passing person passing through Kings County. These changes also include adoption of the new fire hazard severity zones, which is required by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection pursuant to Government Code five-one-one-seven-eight. Um I'll give you a quick background. Um approximately a year ago for us, it was discovered that even though the latest edition of the fire code was approved by the board in twenty twenty-three, we had never adopted it by ordinance, and that's the way we currently have it set up right now. Um so once we started to look into that issue, uh it sparked several other kind of a a year-long discovery process, I guess you could say, that identified the need for several updates within chapter ten of the County Code of Ordinances. Uh chapter ten is the chapter of the county's Code of Ordinances containing the Fire Prevention and Protection Code. The Fire Prevention and Protection Code sets the regulations for fire department and safety within the county's jurisdiction. Uh with the guidance of County Council, the Fire Department updated chapter ten, ensuring that it matches current local and federal law. Additionally, the proposed changes are a more accurate guiding document for the Fire Department to operate out of, as well as clearly defining the rules that the public can educate themselves with. Um I have a summary of each change, but i- in short, what we did was uh we basically repealed all four articles where they were in there and then reenacted. Uh most of them, we redid those four there and then reenacted some other ones. I can go through each one if you'd like, a quick summary. Um I'm not sure how you guys would like to to move forward, just to be respectful of everybody's time.
Would you like to hear all the new ordinances that we've uh applied?
No, okay.
We're good.
We're good. Uh I guess overall, the 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 main goal was um to kind of future-proof our department in some ways. Uh for instance, the fire code, now we have it as it it'll be the most current fire code, and that's what's in there. Another thing is we had fees that were in our ordinances, but as we changed the fee schedule, the ordinances never changed. So we've kind of future-proofed everything to streamline it, to keep everything up to date, and we never fall behind. That's the that's the goal.
Blake, is this something we need to do every year, every five years?
So now, no. Um what we need to do is the Fire Department is make sure we're maintaining these ordinances and that we're looking at them, but that's what we eliminated the best that we could, um obviously following local laws, is that we don't have to redo this every single year or every couple of years. And um it that way, we're always up to date and it's clear for the public to understand.
You're good. Do you have any questions from the board? Do we have any questions from the audience? Anybody on us like to hear all the ordinances one by one?
Um sorry, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank Blake for uh his efforts in keeping everybody um informed and his trips back and forth to Avonale, City Manager and council there to make sure everybody understands. So you did uh you you came at this issue um with a lot of attention to detail, I appreciate.
Now Blake, now that this is illegal, are acetylene bombs still legal?
Those are unfortunately not illegal or not legal. No, definitely not. Definitely not. Thank you.
I've only been practicing that for fifty years.
How many fingers you got?
Got all my fingers. I got one toe gone.
Okay, we'll go on now to item B, regular calendar, Public Works Department. Mitchell, good morning, Mitchell, how you doing today?
Doing good. Uh good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with the Public Works Department. Uh before your board this morning with the request to approve um some right-of-way agreements for the Twenty-second Avenue and Grangeville Boulevard Roundabout um Safety Project. A little bit of history on the project, in August two thousand eighteen, uh the Board of Supervisors approved the Public Works Department to submit applications through the Highway Safety Improvement uh Plan uh for a couple of different projects, including the roundabout and flashing beacons installed on some roadway signs. Um that project was awarded, and then in February of twenty twenty, the consultant uh services agreement was awarded to Peters Engineering to prepare the plan specifications and estimates uh for the roundabout. Um after a couple of years of being in design, uh back and forth with the right-of-way, the property owners um uh County Council and our right-of-way consultant, we're finally in a position where all the property owners have signed uh their respective right-of-way agreements. Uh so we're requesting that the board approve the purchase agreements for right-of-way for the roundabout project at Twenty-second Avenue in Grangeville. Approve the grant deed certificates of acceptance for purchasing the additional right-of-way. Approve a bill of sale that was required for uh some of the trees and irrigation system on one of the properties. And also authorize the Public Works Director to sign funds disbursement requests, title acceptance forms, and escrow closing documents related to the right-of-way for this project. Um this is the next step, a kind of holding us back for construction. Um if approved, uh we'll go through the escrow crop escrow process with the property owners, acquire that right-of-way. At the same time, we're finalizing our utility relocations with PG&E. Uh once we have that, we'll be able to submit our construction request for authorization to Caltrans and uh get this project finally constructed. Uh so at this time, we're uh requesting uh that your board approve um the right-of-way agreements and documents for this project.
Thank you, Mitchell. Any questions from the board?
Couple of questions, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Uh actually, the uh the Kings County System Systemic Systematic Safety Analysis Report, that's that's new to me. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that because I always thought if we were looking to uh have an intersection or specific area, analyze that we depended on Caltrans. So how how much does, how heavy does our local dat- dataway um to get to even request a roundabout at a certain intersection or a highway inter- interchange crossing?
Yes, that's a that's a good question that provides some info, some general info. So the systemic safety analysis report was a one-time um uh funding from Caltrans that went out to county so they could prepare this report. Um it's it essentially took our data, our collision data, and the consultant went through and kind of analyzed the hotspot locations. So you'll see in the agenda says uh top twenty priority intersections. So they go through our database, um pull those uh collisions, and then they'll go through different countermeasures. So it's a four-way stop, is a signal, is a roundabout. Um and then that's used, you need that systemic safety report in order to apply for the H-SIP funding to get the project.
So with that funding, you identified twenty hotspots in the county?
Uh with so with the original funding, the report was prepared. And essentially, that report is what we use to go after the H-SIP project. So anytime we're before your board asking for um approval of a Highway Safety Improvement Plan project, um it's based off of an application that was awarded based off of that report.
Okay, can you do me a favor, because if you don't know this off the top of your head, can you check uh in Querker in the intersection of um Pickaroe and Highway forty-three? Because I don't know how many um accidents or crashes or deaths at um this area at Twenty-second and Grangeville that pulls the trigger on a roundabout, but we've had quite a few there. Um teenagers, young drivers, um there in Querkerland um get killed there over the last two years, and I know the community's been asking. Actually, um your predecessors, well, the former Public Works Director um was looking at um some of that, but we were, we were, I was under the belief that he was reaching out to Caltrans, so.
Yeah, so based off of the location and forty-three being one of the intersections, it'll be governed by Caltrans. Um so some of those collisions, we don't get that information because it'll go to the state. Uh but we can definitely see if we have um history in that area.
Thank you, appreciate that. And then um just as you know probably better than any of us, with Caltrans, lately, they've been changing the game on us um and moving the end zone at the last minute specifically with Kellerman City Pedestrian Bridge Design and uh to some of the other issues that we think we're tackling and moving forward with and getting progress. And then we get these emails or these um meetings where they they push back on that. So do us a favor and stay on top of them on that because that's not acceptable. It pushes back deadlines and a lot of board members and and our constituents are waiting on progress here that these delays come and we're the ones who get blamed for them when I don't want to say they're out of our control because if if we get aggressive with Caltrans and we stay in aggressive communication, I believe that we could avoid the these type of issues a little bit better. So with that, thank you, thank you. I look forward to the update on forty-three and Pickaroe.
Yeah, for sure.
Hey, very good. Uh any other questions from the board? Do you have any questions from the audience? Anybody online?
No.
I know this seems like a long time, in six years, and uh I know there've been multiple lives lost there uh over the years, and there was a bad wreck here, I think, two weeks ago, again. And the people are like, you know, when are they gonna do something? But we get the blame for not acting, but the process takes six years, and we're still probably two years away from construction, correct?
I I would say a little bit less. The main holdup was the the right-of-way agreements. Every property owner has the opportunity to um review the agreements, going through our council, going through their legal council. Um so there was a holdup um on that, but now that we've gotten to a point where everybody can sign, um it it should be less than two years.
So there was no eminent domain on that, it was just we we worked with all the all the constituents and all the neighbors to get them to be on the same page?
Yes, we we try to avoid that step, um just because that's also a long process and um kind of the connotation that comes with eminent domain, uh we try to work with the property owners.
Yeah, just it just takes takes a long time, so people expect it to be done that day, but uh we gotta go through all the hoops, so thank you for your work and your dedication.
It's probably just always a good time too, just not trying to sound like a preacher because we've all been guilty of it, but probably that first um level that leads to these um accidents is the drivers, and we're all distracted by these, especially young kids and the distractions and new technology and the vehicles. And just, you know, we just all need to be better defensive drivers and not assume that somebody is um gonna do the right thing when they're coming up on our approach to an intersection or something. So I don't want it, just like we don't like being blamed, I want to put this on on Caltrans and it's our responsibility behind the wheel too, but yeah, we can use the help to expedite.
We're reacting to a situation we have no control of with with uh road approving. We just had a victim witness uh two weeks ago, and all fatalities in Kings County were drunk driving. So makes it sad, I mean, and this may not solve that problem, but uh it takes six years of us and our staff working on it, lining up money, looking for funding, buying people's property, and it still could take a drunk driver still run this upside and run a roundabout, so makes it really difficult. So thank you, Mitchell. Uh if there's no more questions, we have a motion and a second, man of court, please call roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Good.
I think the utilities will be the problem, and if we could underground those with any other funding you can find would be greatly appreciated. Because a lot of time, those power poles are what makes the uh traffic accident worse.
Yeah.
So anytime we can do a you you utility realignment, if we can go underground, it'd be the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
So will we have a motion and a second on that one?
That's why my pause was I I thought, you know.
See, I asked, I asked.
That way.
I had to ask for comments first.
I know, I apologize, that's why we both said I.
Just do this right, so we'll do it. Supervisor Robinson and a second Supervisor Valley. And uh still four in favor, one absent. Very good, we'll move on now to.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. The dimension's killing me. Okay, item C, Administration, and looks like we have uh Michael. Morning, Michael.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of board. My name is Michael Amin, Administrative Analyst with Kings County Administration. I'm here this morning to present an ordinance amend amending uh Article One, Chapter Two, Section two dash four point one of the Kings County Code of Ordinances to reaffirm and clarify uh the consolidate rules of the County Surveyor and Road Commissioner under the authority of the Director of Public Works. This consolidation was originally established by ordinance number six eighty-two um in April twenty seventeen and has since um helped streamline infrastructure oversight and improve or operation operational efficiency. The amendment being introduced today um men maintains this uh ordinance while incorporating update language that more clearly I would outline the director's um expanded responsibilities and the county's available uh options for meeting professional license requirements. Under the amendment or um amend amended ordinance, uh the Director of Public Works consult uh continue to to serve as both County Surveyor and Road Commissioner and is also responsible for overseeing County Fleet Services and um consolidation of maintenance of county county-owned facilities, including parks. To ensure uh flexibility in meeting professional license requirement that ordinance authorized the county to um designate another qualified employee, hire or hire licensed professionals or a part-time basis or a contract with public or private entities. This ensure that county, that Kings County can um consistently meet its um infrastructure responsibility responsibilities even when the appointment, the appointed Director of Public Works doesn't hold um every acquired license for the consolidation rules. Um there is no immediate fiscal impact associated with the ordinance. Any further cost related to uh staffing or contracting professional services will be evaluated in on a case-by-case basis. And additionally, through the normal budget process, um if the board approved that introduction and waived the first reading today, the ordinance will return for adoption on May twenty twenty twenty-five and will become effective thirty days after adoption, following the standard um population requirements. Uh this ordinance has um has been reviewed and approved as to form for County Council and align with um ex- existing county policy regarding the delivery of professional services and uh departmental uh oversight. At this time, um we are we are respectfully ask uh your boards to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance amending Section two dash four point one of Kings County Code of Ordinances uh pertaining to the offices of County Surveyor and Road Commissioner. I appreciate your time and I'm available to answer any question you may have.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions from the board? You want to read the ordinance?
Uh it's pretty short.
Do you have any questions from the audience? Do we have direction from the board?
So moved without wave of the reading.
Uh move by Supervisor Nevs and the wave with the reading. Second by Supervisor Robinson, man of court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Hey, Michael.
Thank you.
Four in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
You got it passed. Okay, next item, Alex.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alex Seawalker, Administrative Analyst, Kings County Administration. Before you this morning is a resolution proclaiming the existence of a local emergency due to the recent localized migration of the beet leaf hopper, a vector for the curly top virus. Government Code Section eight-six-three-zero and Chapter Six, Section six through seven of the Kings County Code of Ordinances empowers the Director of Emergency Services to proclaim the existence of a local emergency when the county of Kings is affected or is likely to be affected by a public calamity and the Board of Supervisors is not in session. Due to the immediacy and extreme peril of the vital tomato crop in Kings County due to the migration of beet leaf hoppers, the Director of Emergency Services proclaimed the existence of a local emergency on May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Such proclamation needs to be ratified by the board within seven days to be in full force and effective. The Kings County Agricultural Commissioner's Steelers Office on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five noted that conditions this year may lead to larger pressure from beet leaf hoppers, posing a great risk to the county's tomato production. On March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the California Department of Food and Agriculture, known as CDFA, issued an alert that increased populations of beet leaf hoppers were identified in the San Joaquin Valley, concentrated in the hillsides west of Kellman City. Reviewing conditions of this year's season with feedback from local industry, it is determined that there is a present, immediate, and extreme peril risk to tomato crops in Kings County. The full scope of damage cannot be determined with certainty at this time, but it can be mitigated with imme- with immediate action. There are forty-two thousand forty-eight permitted acres of tomatoes in Kings County. The final tomato crop numbers for twenty twenty-four have not been finalized at this time, but are estimated to have an annual harvesting value of approximately two hundred thirty-six million five hun- sorry, two hundred thirty-six, five hundred twenty thousand, based on the values of Ca- California Tomato Growers Association and the county's permitted acreage. A similar proclamation was ratified by the board on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. So last year's action was successful in protecting Kings County tomatoes. The resolution has been reviewed and proved as deformed by County Council, and at this time, we respectfully ask your board to ratify a resolution proclaiming the existence of a local emergency due to the recent localized migration of beet leaf hoppers, a vector for the curly top virus. Staff and I are available to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Any questions from the board?
Uh Mr. Chair, the only other couple of things, um historically, this uh took place three weeks earlier last year um in April. This year, as Alex pointed out, the numbers were low until the last week. This year, as Alex pointed out, the numbers were low until the last week of uh, April. And then uh, the numbers just exploded, working with industry. You know, Alex pointed out the producer side, but there's also the transportation side and the processing side. So you can almost multiply those numbers a couple of times. Uh, when you take into all of the uh, employment and all of the resources that are need to get that crop uh, to the table. And so um, I think I just uh, hope my colleagues understand. Um, and this is a sixty day resolution, correct, Alex?
That is correct, Supervisor.
Be good until the first uh, week of July, which will certainly help the entire season.
It'd be harvest time.
Well, and and the early ones will be harvested, but.
Yep.
So I thi- I think timing wise, I think it works out uh, extremely well, so.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions?
Is is that a motion, sir?
Uh, yes.
I'll second that. Um, I know this is a issue because we get Saturday morning emergency emails from Jimmy Hook on the beet leaf hopper here. We've been uh, kept in the loop on here. Thanks, Jimmy. Appreciate the good work. So second.
Yeah, we have motion second. Do we have any questions from the audience? Uh, seeing none. We have anybody online?
Yeah.
We can get.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Mattel, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Berboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Well, favor one absent. Thank you, Alex. At this time, we'll move on to board member comments, uh, announcements and reports. Uh, who wants to start? Supervisor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, uh, it's been a while now, but when we go back to Tuesday, uh, April twenty-ninth, attended California Public Finance Authority Meeting with Supervisors. Uh, Wednesday on the thirtieth, Brown Act Training. Uh, May first, Human Services Administration Funding Presentation with Supervisor Thayer. Um, on Friday, the ribbon cutting uh, at for sunrise. Uh, last Tuesday, served with supervisors at the employee barbecue. Uh, then attended, the following day, attended a behavioral health funding presentation, again with Supervisor Thayer. And a on a camping ordinance uh, presentation done by administration and department heads. Last Thursday, um, attended fire, fire chief interviews with supervisors. Uh, yesterday, attended K T triple A Board of Supervisor with Board of Supervisors from Tulare County. And uh, received a tour at Lemoore Naval Air Station with several supervisors. And last night, attended a Sons of Liberty meeting on the CO2 pipelines.
Very good.
Thank you.
Supervisor Valley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Saturday, uh, May third, in Avenue for the Old Timers Day Parade. They had a good turnout. Uh, festival all day, live music at night. Uh, the night before, they streamed uh, Jose Ramirez's fight for Madison Square Garden on a big screen in the park. Um, so always a good time in uh, in Avenue. Um, I want to thank uh, Kerya and staff for uh, helping me uh, prepare a one sheet on the county's um, um, efforts in Kettleman City. So that went back ways. Thank you. Good job. We're going to do some work with that. Get it uh, translated to Spanish and then um, uh, get out to Kettleman Fort Town Hall and just kind of update slash remind the community. Um, I know we don't like to toot our own horns a lot, but if you don't speak up, then some of our good work that we do there, um, I've learned goes unnoticed or or we might get the blame for something that we've actually uh, put monies in or efforts in. And so I think just a simple fix to that is going out there. It's been a while. The last town hall meeting, we did two of them towards the end of last year, but that was um, specific um, focusing on the Kettleman City Pedestrian Bridge. So uh, but wanting to get out there, so look for.
Let us know when you do that. Maybe we can support you.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
Or hack with that for you.
Yeah, come on out.
Well, thank you.
Hey, throw some uh, tomatoes and leaf hoppers uh, when I'm speaking. Uh, let's see, uh, um, last Friday, I want to thank Paul Yoder. Um, our new lobbyist, he came to Corcoran uh, Friday morning. I drove down from Sacramento. We had a good time uh, catching up. We started off at Lake Bottom and I had a good conversation there. I shared with him what's important in my district and um, some issues there to be uh, help us out and um, more focused on Kettleman City, some issues there, some um, non-monetary issues that I think he'd just be helpful with and getting us some meetings uh, in the Capitol and some of uh, his connections there. And then we drove over to the Five Pillars of Freedom, shared with him um, the history of that monument and uh, his father-in-law is a former Marine, so I gave him a challenge coin uh, from the Five Pillars. And uh, we have some ideas there on how do you want to promote that through the Veterans Affairs Committees and maybe bring in some of those legislators uh, on the Veterans Affairs Committee down uh, to Corcoran and um, just doing something with those pillars. Uh, and then the um, last, last Tuesday, April uh, twenty-ninth was the two-year anniversary of the Five Pillars of Freedom, the day we unveiled them and um, if you missed that, there's great uh, video on YouTube from that historic day and a beautiful moment, and so we appreciate that. Lastly, I just want to give my two cents here because I'm not a member of the Health Committee. But uh, I did just want to put out for anyone who uh, has opinions. I know what the employees are on this thing. But um, one thing I learned was that um, even if under our insurance plan, if a doctor uh, prescribes you with any form of signal blue tide, uh, whether it's for um, sleep apnea or obesity, um, anything outside of diabetes, um, that we can't get that cleared. And I understand that it's expensive, but I would imagine that we have some employees that um, if their doctors are saying this is what they need, that um, maybe if they knew where more people stood on it, we get to uh, have that conversation um, at the Health Committee level and those who are responsible for it. I bring it up for a couple of reasons. One, you know, they're saying signal blue tide helps prevent heart attacks, um, uh, stroke uh, percentages. Um, and if you could lower the weight of your body to lower those danger levels, then I think I see that as an investment in our employees and ourselves. Um, if we could um, instead of paying for, you know, um, um, insurance um, for employees, once they get diabetes or they have a stroke or a heart attack, um, I think we've all been working towards prevention. And then I think the other good news, um, seeing where it pans out, where President Trump yesterday announced um, some type of actions on getting a um, pharma and um, you know, the those who put out these medications to lower their prices on on a lot of um, medications, when you have people paying twenty-five thousand dollars for thirty pills uh, for a month just to live, right? And um, so that's something I was excited to hear about yesterday, but we'll see how that trickles down, you know, to reality. And if it does, then maybe that's an opportunity where medications like specifically signal blue tide that I'm talking about, maybe we can look into that and see if we can't get some language in our insurance plans uh, to be able to provide that for for our employees. And that's about all I have to say on that.
Very good. Supervisor Nevs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attended the Kettleman City Hills um, Facility Informational Meeting held in Kettleman City on April twenty-ninth. On April thirtieth, Kathy and I traveled to Fresno to attend the Volunteer Ombudsman uh, Appreciation Luncheon. Uh, ombudsmen uh, uh, play a valuable role in individuals uh, relating to day-to-day care, health, safety and financial abuse. So uh, well attended in Fresno. On May first, I attended the uh, National Day of Prayer held in front of uh, Hanford Civic. It was a warm day. I think I got a little bit of sunburn on the top of my head. I will put that into the Health Department, see if we can fix that. This year's uh, national theme, pour out to the God for hope and to be filled. So that was the thing. Um, also on May first, the uh, Thursday Night Market kicked off its twenty-fifth season with the uh, they had a huge turnout and they've had a second one last week. Um, huge turnouts, a lot of, a lot of good music, a lot of good time. Um, I too attended the May second sunrise uh, apartment ribbon cutting. I attended the Old Timers uh, Day Breakfast on May third. Uh, May fifth, the uh, Lemoore College Paramedic Advisory Committee uh, held a meeting to receive updates on approval of the state apprenticeship program. The uh, program will assist individuals in tuition costs uh, to become paramedics. Also report from the accreditation visit and the update on the new health careers uh, building on campus, who looks real good on the outside. And should be open in January of twenty-six. Um, twenty-eight students are on track to graduate this September. Students have to spend about thirteen hundred and thirty-two hours uh, in the program over a twelve-month period. Currently, there are forty-five applications for a thirty-two student um, cohort. So hopefully we'll be able to get that new building um, yeah, put, but to, but good use. Uh, that only, not only helps the paramedic program, it also helps the nursing program, who already have the apprentice program. Uh, Staff Appreciation Luncheon was held uh, May sixth. I want to thank everyone that participated, get a good job, especially those who washed your hands before you served. Um, it's always easy to wash your hands after, but sometimes before it's not. So I'm glad the Health Department was very relaxed on that. So I want to thank Health Department for that. Uh, and then the next day, uh, we went over and helped the Office of Education Staff Apprentice uh, Appreciation Breakfast on May seventh. Um, and I just kept my hands in my pocket, so I didn't have to wash them that. So it was worked out well. The May eighth, with uh, Fire Chief uh, Interviews wrapped up announcing softball at Lemoore High for the uh, two thousand twenty-five season. Um, attended the uh, Kings Lion Brew Fest uh, held in Lemoore on May uh, tenth. And then uh, attended the meet and greet yesterday at the Lemoore Naval Air Station. So with that, thanks very much, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, let's add one more thing. I did most same stuff together with everybody else, but uh, Friday evening, I went to the Tatchy Palace and we attended the Saint Jude's Hospital fundraiser. So third annual fundraiser. It was started by a fifteen-year-old girl that knew somebody that uh, with the Saint Jude's. And it was a third event. Last year, they made a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in one evening and had two hundred people. This year, we had four hundred people. Made a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars in one evening to help Saint Jude's Hospital. If you don't know what Saint Jude's Hospital is, it's a, it's a juvenile cancer and they help a lot of vi- victims of of cancer that can't get any help anywhere else. And there was a couple of stories that were out there that uh, patients, surviving patients had to share with us and it's very uh, very heartwarming. So it's a good event. Uh, hopefully we can grow that in the future, but uh, to be started by someone that fifteen, sixteen years old and still going on, I think she was seventeen now. And so she gave her story and then one of the uh, survivors was a actual driver. It was all put on by the Lemoore uh, Jet Bowl. And so one of the survivors actually drives a car out there and he had saved pins from every procedure he had and it was over forty feet long, but he was still alive today. So uh, good cause. So thank you.
You're talking about Saint Jude's in Memphis?
Yes.
Have you been there?
No.
Well, you know, the tie-in is uh, Tyler French, who was one of the, of the two artists on the Five Pillars. He did, he's on, he did the living mural there for the kids. So when you walk out in the courtyard, it's a living mural built with sequins. So uh, when the wind blows, the smear comes to life.
They showed that in the video. Oh, they showed that. Yeah, that's our guy. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Very cool. At this time, we'll turn over to board correspondents. Kerya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the board received the uh, Fire Department's um, O E S Kings Operational Area Report dated May ninth. The board received invitation from the Highway Patrol to attend the annual Kings County Peace Officer Memorial, which will be held tomorrow at our um, Government Center Courtyard. For upcoming events, Kings County will host its blood drive in memory of Fire Captain Mark Eads this Thursday, March, May fifteenth, from nine AM to one PM on our government um, center next to our old sheriff's office. Walk-ups are welcome, or you can register online. Behavioral Health is sponsoring a tenth annual community walk and mental health awareness event hosted by Oak Wellness Center, which will take place next Wednesday, May twenty-first, from nine AM to one PM at the Oak Wellness Courtyard in Hanford. For upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are from May twentieth. Administration has four items, recognition of twenty-twenty-four Employee of the Year, approval of some financing acquisition constructions for Cal P F A, an electric vehicle charging pilot program, second reading and adoption of ordinance to amend the county survey and road commissioner rules. A DA has two items, a renewal of software agreements, a purchase of a retired member's firearm. Fire has two items, the acceptance of a Community Resilience Program Grant and the second reading of the Fire Prevention and Protection Ordinances that were presented today. Health has three items in agreement with Tri-West Healthcare Alliance, Children and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative. Round three, early, early childhood wraparound services, budget adjustment and a solid waste um, agency grant application. H R has one item regarding detention, detention unit association, side letter, public works, six items, some vehicle purchases for mortar pool, the Kettleman City Infrastructure Project, uh, Kingston Park Tree Cleanup Project, uh, Seventh Avenue, Houston Avenue Project, uh, Kings County Hanford Library Remodel Project and Abanal Cut Off Senate Bill One, Roadway Improvement Phase Two. Sheriff has one items on a school resource deputy service, deputy sheriff service agreement. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to reach out to the audience. Dr. Lewis, would you like to talk about the Good Samaritan Hospital money we've uh, received last week?
Well, we didn't receive funds, but we did receive notice. Uh, so actually, Good Samaritan received official notice um, from the state that they were granted the B chip grant for the uh, Ki- uh, Kings Care Center, which is what will be called. Um, so that's going to be the new puff. The Crisis Residential Unit and the Crisis Stabilization Unit. Um, they were granted sixteen million dollars and they are going to provide the three-point-three million dollar match, as I understand it. Um, the governor made the announcement yesterday and so it was pretty exciting to watch. Um, some of our surrounding counties also did really well. Fresno did quite well. Um, Tulare County has um, one grant that was granted to them as well. So we're excited to reach out to our surrounding counties and see how we can partner with all these new facilities that are going to come to the valley.
No, thank you. Just a friendly reminder, this is what we were trying to put in our old health department.
Yes.
And so it is going to be across the street uh, by the brick building uh, across the street from Applebee's. So yeah, it's going to be a nice, in a, in a vacant lot, dirt lot, needs to be, needs to have something going there. So a perfect place, close to the community.
Perfect, yeah. I'm so pleased and so thankful to all the people in our department and also Good Samaritan. We partnered so effectively and even though the application didn't go in as a partnership, we worked together really effectively and our department worked really hard. So really proud of them and thank you.
No, very good. Thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to closed session as outlined by council.
Thank you. The first item is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section five, four, nine, five, six point nine of the government code deciding whether to initiate litigation one case. Litigation initiated formally in Raywell Path Holdings, Inc., at Al United States Bankruptcy Court for the Southern District of Texas, Houston Division, Case Number twenty-four, nine, zero, five, three, three, A R P. Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D one. The next item, personnel matter, Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, seven, public employee appointment, title Fire Chief. And the last item, the public employee evaluation for the interim Fire Chief is being pulled.
Very good. Kerya, do you know when the next food truck vendor will be here on Tuesday?
Next, next week.
Next Tuesday. Okay. Well, I don't know. Are we going to work on a way to where some of our employees can order ahead? Do we have a a vin- a vehicle for the, for that or just have to get out there early in order?
So it's all dependent if the vendor provides that service. So if they do have it, obviously you, we encourage that.
Eleven-thirty to one-thirty?
Correct. We will send out email by the end of the week to give the list of those who will be here next week.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we will adjourn and our next meeting will be actually today. Uh, we have Cal P F A, right? No?
One o'clock.
One o'clock?
No.
Uh,
Mid King.
Mid Kings River, one o'clock. And we'll be back here next Tuesday, nine AM. Thank you very much.